I am Oshkosh Cheryl Hens along with Dan Ryelance and we're continuing our conversations with Oshkosh Common Council candidates. There are seven folks running. Two of the candidates are here with us this evening. They'll be with us for the full hour. There will be a primary election on Tuesday, February 17th. In that election, one of the candidates will be eliminated. The remaining six will move on to the general election which will be held on Tuesday, April 7th. So, we're very pleased to welcome this evening two relative newcomers. We have to my left John Hens and to his left is Steve Cummings. Welcome to both of you. We appreciate you both being here and anxious to hear your views on things. We always start out political type shows with folks telling us a little bit about themselves and why they're running. So, John, since you're right here, if you want to go ahead and start us off.
Well, as you've known me for a while Cheryl, so you know that back around when the smoking ban was being proposed in the city and whatnot, I happened to work at what was Ground Zero, I guess you would call the anti-ban play when I was at Jeffson Rugby. And back then I had expressed to you that I had somewhat of an interest of getting into city government, but I didn't know if I wanted to go through the whole process that, you know, with the paper and the questions of the shows and everything like that. As time went on and I kept track of what was going on, it just seemed like nothing was changing with our city government. And then last April, my father passed away unfortunately.
Sorry to hear that.
And I was there taking care of him and I remember he was very upset when there were no challengers in the last race. That was actually just after he had passed away. And it kind of lit a fire under me to say, you know what, we need to do something about the government. It's not that, it's not that I think it's broken. I just think that it's kind of, if it's, if you go back to an old record player, it's stuck on one spot. It's just skipping back and forth and we aren't getting anything finished in the city right now. And we try to move ahead, just kind of keep hitting the same spot. So, I'm hoping that I can bring my views in and maybe affect some change for a positive way to, so maybe we can be a little more proactive. So, maybe we aren't making some of the mistakes that we've made in the past.
Okay. And you're not at Jeffson Rugby anymore?
No.
You're currently unemployed?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, you along with a lot of folks. Steve, tell us a little about yourself and why you're getting into this crazy game of politics.
Well, I've lived here all of my life as my, as has my wife. I think we're both six generation living in Oshkosh. I think for some of the same reasons John said, it seems that there, things aren't moving. There's good ideas, but they don't get off of dead center. And there's got to be, we've got to address things such as economic development, industrial development. Just, it just seems we're stuck in the center. Nothing is moving. Too much debating. I guess the best way I can analyze how I view what's happening in the city and, not that I was around then, but in the 1870s, we kept burning the city down. And the next day, people got out and wanted to rebuild. It wasn't let's point fingers. It wasn't let's debate it and analyze and analyze and debate. It was let's just rebuild it. Let's move forward. And I think we've lost that spirit. We need a spirit that is just, let's just move forward. We're going to make mistakes, but let's move forward. And I don't see that happening. And that's one of the main reasons.
We'll explore that with them, huh?
Absolutely. You know, there are two incumbents running, Tony Palmieri and Jessica King. And then the other five candidates, of course, are challengers and relative newcomers. None of you has run for council before. If there's someone on the council that you would, I guess, most identify with, you know, one person, more than one person, who, who would that be?
Me first?
Whoever.
Go first. You're younger.
Is it that obvious? I, that's, that's a tough question because actually I don't like to pigeonhole myself into just one group. We have the four-three dynamic right now for the most part. But I don't think that I would say I'd always vote with the threes and I don't think I'd say I'd always vote with the fours. I think you have to take each issue for what it is and depending on what's going on with, you know, it could be totally different if it were something like the Main Street Bridge Lights, which I actually showed up to ask a few questions about. I would have, I would have been on the three that were against it because I didn't think the city should be taking over all the cost of everything. And not that it wasn't a great project and the intentions were phenomenal, but we needed to get that all tightened up right in the beginning. But then again, now if they'd have come in and said, oh, we'll cover it all year, then I'd have been on the four voting for it. So, that it's.
He's a politician already.
No.
You notice that?
It is. It's every issue, it's every issue on its own.
Okay, all right. Steve, what about you?
I don't identify with any one individual. I think, I identify more for the people I would represent. There's a lot of different issues and different age groups. I think I'm representing the people, not my own personal views, which, which may differ a great deal. But I have to go with what the majority of the taxpayers really want in this city. And I think that they want progress. They want things to move forward.
Sure. Well, and that kind of touched on my next question. I mean, I realize it's been really cold. This has been a weird winter so far.
It's Wisconsin.
And a very hard one. Yeah, that's true. But, you know, have you had an opportunity to really be out there very much talking to people? And, you know, if so, what are they telling you? I mean, you've kind of suggested a little bit what they're, what they're telling you. But are they, you know, overly frustrated with what they're seeing right now?
I think there's frustration for a lot of, a lot of different reasons. And I think that everyone knows that the reason is everything from currently snow removal. But, you know, we've been beaten with a lot of snow and there's no place to put it. You can't be that impatient. I mean, just, it'll disappear by spring.
Yeah.
But it's just day after, it's been day after day after day of it. And I think the city's doing a decent job. You've got the flooding, which has been an issue. You know, is that a one-time, you know, does it happen every hundred years or is it every 50 years? A lot of frustration there. I think it's, I think it depends on the age group too. You know, younger, younger people have different issues than older people. And you've got to find a balance. What, what benefits the most of the people, not just one particular group.
John, what are you finding people are happy with or unhappy with?
Unfortunately, I find a lot of apathy when it comes to city government. And for the same reasons that we both said that we were running. A lot of people are like, doesn't matter who's on there. Nothing's going to get done. Nothing's going to change. And, you know, and I have to sit there and try to tell the people, I can't do it all by myself, but one voice sometimes is all it takes. And that's, and that's what we need to do. And I hear from a lot of people, just all kinds of things. Like you were bringing up about the, the snow removal on the streets. I don't think they've done a terrible job, but I think they could do a better job. But they do have a budget to stay within and I understand that. But then why are they turning, why do we have it turning around now? Now they want us to have our snow off our sidewalks by noon the next day if it stops snowing at 11 o'clock at night. It's kind of, you think about that. I live on Brockway. It's a one block street between Doty and Oregon Street. I've still got this much ice on our street. There, there's a little bit of concrete up by Oregon. That's about it.
There's a lot of streets like that.
Exactly. And normally we're one of the last ones bowled. It's a small street. It's not, it's not the only paved street in the area anymore. So, it doesn't get the attention paid to it like it used to. But that, you know, that's one thing. And, and I, and I hear from, I hear from people that they just, a lot of people are upset because of the spending increase for this year when we're in an economic downturn. I have heard people say, well, what's, what's our tax money going to? Why are we spending more money? We, we're making, you know, people are making less. People are losing jobs. Our houses aren't, you know, aren't there as far as what we thought they were going to be worth. And the city's act, it's like business as usual.
Increase is very small for the 2009 budget.
But it's still an increase.
That's right.
And it doesn't matter if it's a small increase. The perception to the public is that it's business as usual.
Well, but everything's going up. I mean, you know, when you're restricted on how much money you're getting from the state in the way of shared revenues and you have all your costs for the most part continuing to go up, what would your solution be?
Well, I, pardon me on this one, but I really don't think the city should be in the real estate business. I think we, you know, big issue, I believe Mr. O'Dace spoke on this when he was on your show, when he was talking about the Mercury Marine area. That's cost the city what, I think it's about over $6,000 dollars since, since they've acquired it. An extra fee. Now, could we use $6 million for our budget? Could we use $6 million for future budgets? The, the roundabout, which was supposed to be paid for, taken care of by higher forms of government.
The state.
Yes. But that now is going upward almost to $5 million, I believe, with extra costs because of the property and everything else that's around that area. It's just one of those things. Well, there's, there's $10 million right off the bat that, do you think our city could use that right now? Aren't there more important things than an intersection and owning this? Not only that, the Mercury property isn't on the tax rolls right now. We're not making any money off of it. The city owns it.
But you can't take state highway money for the roundabout and put it into the city budget.
Well, if, but we're, the money we're spending over and above, there's money that is costing the city of Oshkosh. That's what I'm saying. That's money that we wouldn't be spending there. We could be spending it elsewhere.
Steve?
Well, my whole background has been business. I was a director of marketing for a Fortune 500 company. I've owned my own business in Oshkosh. I've gone through these economic, economic ups and downs. And when there's a down, you tighten your belt. You ask those hard questions. You get rid of the frills. You work to a plan and, for example, a roundabout. Do we really need it? What is, what is it going to do? Get me to pick and save quicker? You know, there's going to be some logic in this. And you do tighten your belt and you ask those tough questions. And I don't think a lot of government does that. It's sort of business as usual. For example, government raises taxes to cover shortfalls. In a business, when the economy goes down, you can't raise your prices. You can try, but you're not going to sell anything. So, why does government think they can make up a shortfall by raising our taxes when the reality of business is you can't raise your prices? I mean, it's the same thing. But government keeps doing it. They don't address the issue, the problems which are the spending, the budgets.
My city property tax is lower in 2009 than it was in 2008. I don't know about you people. Not by a lot.
I went down.
But it went down. So, I don't see where we're spending more as far as the city's concerned. Because I'm paying less, a little less. I'm curious about, did you people both just independently on your own decide you were going to run? Did an archangel appear before your bed and say, John, we want you to run? Are you representing any group? Did groups come to you and say, are you a chamber candidate, for example?
No.
Are you a member of the chamber?
Nope.
Okay, all right. I mean, I just, it's just interesting that you just sort of just come independently of yourself. Very often when candidates run, they have groups, interest groups, organizations that want them to run. Ask them. You guys kind of like the Lone Rangers. Is that?
Or sometimes fellow council members.
Or fellow council.
Or school board members or whoever.
Your decisions are really both made just independently of?
Well, I think it might, maybe in my cases, you know, I was, you know, it's maybe time to stop, stop grumbling and do something about it. And I talked to different people and they were very encouraging. I was, I was rather surprised. And what really surprised me is when I started to do my nomination papers, how eager people were to sign them. And they had a lot of negative comments for what we've been, what's going on in the city. And I was somewhat dumbfounded.
What's going to be your strategy? This is going to be probably a 10 or 12% turnout election on the primary. How are you going to avoid being the one person that's going to be eliminated? Are you going to spend money for the primary? And if so, what are you going to spend it? Are you going to campaign? How are you going to avoid being the one person that gets knocked out? What are you going to do?
Well, as far as I'm, with me, my everyday life, I go out there, I make it a point to introduce myself to people, say that I'm running for city council. Ask them if they have any, if they have any problems, if they have any issues, if they have anything they like. Just what their overall thought is of the council and what, what are they looking for from the city council. The best way to do it is to just get out there and put your shoes on the street and walk out and talk to people, shake hands, introduce yourself. People still aren't rude enough where you walk up to them and say, hi, my name's John Hens and I'm running for city council. Could you have a couple of moments of your time? Most people, if they're busy, they're just, I'm sorry, I don't have time or I'm not interested. And they go away.
Do you have any campaign literature?
No. I'm going to try to do this as a grassroots campaign.
Okay. How about you? Spend any money on the primary?
If I ever get a treasure, I probably, no. I've just been very busy. A lot of issues going on right now.
I'm just curious how you're going to.
Yeah. I've been using some direct mail, some print advertising. But it's, it's a similar thing. You know, talking to a lot of people, you know, sort of, you know, kind of many focus groups, if you will. You know, what do you think of these various issues? And trying to get a mix of ages, locations in the city. I'm a dreadful East Sider. I've lived on the East Side since.
What positions are you on the ballot for the primary?
I got the number two slot.
Number two? How about you?
I didn't check. I think I can do about it.
I think I was the only person who showed up that day. I got a call from the city clerk.
Two is a good spot. One or two is good. Six or seven probably isn't as good.
It's not the slot, it's the person.
Huh? Percentage wise, that's not true.
Well.
It carries a little weight anyway.
Yeah, yeah. 5%.
I don't want to put too much stock into it. I'd rather prove myself than try to rely on a ballot position.
Sounds good.
All right. Go ahead.
I have some, you know, I have very little to, to deal with because I know so very little about you and there's so very little out. So, I basically took a couple of quotes that, and you can say, oh, I didn't say that. But, so I want to run those by you and maybe ask a little explanation about what you meant. Steve, for example, I'll just read it. I think I have the knowledge to make a difference to help us move forward. So, my question is, what, what knowledge do you have and what do you mean by moving forward?
Well, the knowledge, a couple, a couple of answers to that. I have lived here all my life.
Okay.
You know, I went to this high school for one year.
Okay.
That's, and I lived a block, I grew up a block away from here on Parkway. So, I've, and again, I'm the fifth generation of the family to live here, as is my wife. So, I've seen the city evolve over a lot of years. And the evolution has not always been good. There's a lot of good parts of it. The other part is knowing this, the city intimately. I have a very strong business background. And, you know, government should be managed a bit like a business. We're very responsible to our stockholders, which are the taxpayers. I think the taxpayers need good value for their dollar. And the, the moving forward, we've, we've got to get more of a better industrial base. We've got to start rebuilding what we've lost. We need good jobs. And I just, I think it's, it's a strong business sense.
Can you be specific on what you want to move forward? What do you want to?
The main thing is economic development. We've got to get that going. I think we've got to capitalize on, there's 165,000 acres of water around here. You know, how can we as a city capitalize on that?
The main impetus for economic development has been the riverfront. Are you supportive of?
I'm supportive of that. But, but there's a lot, you know, the pioneer is sitting there.
Yes.
Something has to happen to that. But we have to get industrial. I mean, when I, when I grew up, as a lot of my friends did, most of our dads worked at what is usually called the axle. And it's down to a skeleton crew. I mean, that was a major force in the city. That has dwindled. Leach Company is gone. Morgan Company is basically gone. We've lost these core industries and not a lot has come in to replace them. As a small business owner, I finally closed shop because it's expensive to do business in the state.
What would you recommend, Stephen? I mean, I agree. I think we need some of those things to come back. Do you have some thoughts on how we go about doing that?
Taxes. This, this state is not friendly to business.
So, you want to lower taxes?
There's got to be something done to make it attractive for companies to, number one, move in here and companies not to move out of here. And when I closed my business, I had to surrender my resale certificate. And the state asked why? And I said, I can't afford to do business in the state. By that time, I pay workers' comp, unemployment, this and that. Maybe I took something home at the end. And it was just, it was very frustrating to work hard and not really properly compensate myself.
Are you for TIF districts to jumpstart the economy?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I don't think we need more box stores.
Okay.
How much more blacktop are we going to put down in this city, which causes a whole other set of problems? I think they have their place.
The other quote is, there has to be a much more proactive approach and projects need to move faster.
Right.
Proactive, what would you do? And which, which projects need to move faster?
Going to go back to economic development. That has got to move forward. You know, let's stop over analyzing and nitpicking.
We're going to make mistakes, but let's just do it. I mean, if there's a, there should be a 10-year plan with this city, which I assume there is. You know, years one, two, one, two, three, four and five are very specific. You get a little more visionary in the 10 years out. But just do it and don't be afraid of, don't second guess everything. Just don't micromanage. Move it. Just, if it's a good idea, let's just do it. How long should we wait for the third developer on the riverfront?
I go back to what happened in the 1870s. Let's just do it. If it makes, let's just do it. I mean, come on, I mean.
You were, you were starting to say if it makes sense. And I think what we've seen so far, some of that has not made sense. And so, that's probably a good thing that they haven't done it. But we do need to get something going there. I mean, how, how much longer should we give this third developer to get something?
I would, I would hope a developer that has local ties, local roots will move faster.
Which this one is, right?
Which this one does. They have, they have a vested interest in the community. Developers from Milwaukee or Madison or Chicago don't really have a vested interest. I mean, everyone's going to make money in this process. But I think you have a, there has to be a bit of an emotional attachment to what you're doing.
Okay. John, what are your thoughts on economic development?
Well, I thought you were talking about, Eric was talking about his quotes. So, I was kind of.
Yeah, well, I have John's quotes.
Okay, sure.
I only have two quotes.
Yeah. Well, I only have two for John too.
All right.
But I was, I didn't want to speak for Steve.
All right, John. The two quotes I have on you is, and you've already kind of said this, quote, "Most of the people I've talked to are just not happy with the way things have gone with the Common City Council." What things have not gone right with the Common Council?
It, it depends which group you're talking to. If you're talking to the group on the side of the four or the side of the three. But you always have people, you know, they're always casting so many stones at each side. We need, I think we need our council at least to appear like they're working together, not like they're constantly going at each other all the time. Because when you watch the council on, on a lot of issues, four-three, four-three, four-three.
Is that bad?
It's not necessarily bad, but it seems like that's the stalemate. You can almost tell when something comes out, how the, how the vote's going to come before they ever have a vote. I, you watch the council meetings. I'm sure you do as well. You can almost tell as soon as something comes out there. Oh, I can tell who's, who's going to vote this way and who's going to vote this way. And it's, I just think they need to have a little more cohesiveness. It does, I'm not saying that the four-three vote's a bad thing in and of itself, but the way it comes across to the public is that you have this group and this group, not this group.
Well, there, there's seven very different independent people. I don't.
But they need to come together to run the city of Oshkosh. They, they don't need to have their battle lines in the sand and say, this is where we are and this is how it's going to be. People get excited. Hey, it's three-two coming into the final two votes. And then the final two votes go to the four.
I hear you. Second quote, quote, "I think we need to shake things up." What do you want to shake up?
What do I want to shake up?
Yeah.
Part of what I was just talking about right now. I think, I also think that a lot of people don't understand a lot of the issues that come before the council. Mr. Bean had a fantastic idea with doing his, his Fifth Tuesdays. I think, you know, there are other ways that you could go about that. Maybe there, maybe we could have, you know, with the Northwestern and the council always kind of at odds, maybe have a media day once a month. Maybe have a council member meeting the day preceding a council meeting with the general public. Not an actual, you know, because that way the, the agenda's out there. It's meant in the paper. People can come in and ask questions or if they want to talk about something that's off. Just, these are just ideas. Something like that, something that reaches out. So, that way people can actually come in, feel like they're a part of what's going on. They understand what's going on. Not like all of a sudden you throw something out there like this dog issue, which thankfully went away. But that, you know, that way if they have questions, they can, they know who to call. Because right now, the way we have, we don't have an alderman system, mayor alderman. We don't have council members representing any districts in the city. So, if you have a problem, who do you call? Which council member do you call? There's nobody really assigned to you. And I know, and I'm not, and I don't want to make this into a north side, south side thing because that's the age old thing with Oshkosh. I'm from the south side of Oshkosh and there's been not a lot of representation from the south side of Oshkosh in the last couple decades. There has been some. I'm not saying there hasn't been any, but there, but who do you, who do you call? Who do you feel, there's nobody from the neighborhood to call per se for a lot of people.
Call anyone who gets a response.
But you can call, but then you can sit and spend your whole night calling and talking to every council member on top of that. It'd be nice, it'd be, I'm not saying that, that you need to change how the council, I'm just saying it's one of those where the council needs, there needs to be a way for the, the average person and a council member to get on the same page. That way they understand what the council's doing and the council understands what the people are thinking.
They all have emails. They're very good in responding to emails. They all have phone.
I'm not saying I've had problems contacting any of them. But that's me. It's different. And maybe if there's something out there where people feel like I can just show, I can show up and ask a question and leave. And I'd never, is, just say I'm a citizen of the city of Oshkosh. And that way it's different than actually having to take the time to email a person and worrying about that. Or picking up the phone and calling them and worrying if you're interrupting them. Because I know, I don't know about you. I don't want to call too early because I don't want to interrupt dinner. I don't want to call too late because maybe they're an early, you know, early to bed person. And all of a sudden it's like 8:30 and I'm like, is this, maybe they're watching TV with someone? Maybe they went out and did, you just kind of sit there like, when do I call? Because you don't want to call right afterward. It, just something, like I said, it just makes it easier for the average person to contact the council. And like I said, those aren't in stone ideas. Those are just ideas that you throw out there.
Well, you certainly can have your own town hall meetings like Brian Bain did, that Fifth Tuesday forum.
And if, and if I did something like that, I would be more than happy to try and get something going like that and invite anybody else that was on the council to take part in it.
I doubt that they would though. I mean, when, when Bain first started his 15th Tuesday forums, you know, there were a few council members who showed up. And then that sort of dwindled away. And the people attending sort of dwindled away. And I think what we've kind of heard over the years from council members is, you know, we, we have a lot of meetings already. We don't want to attend another one, especially when the public can come to a council meeting and ask questions on any agenda item and then speak during citizen statements on other things. From my perspective, I think email is, is the best way to go because they can choose to answer it when they want.
At any time, right.
You're not interrupting them. You can email them all in one fell swoop. And that way if the weather's bad, you don't have to worry about getting out of it. You just sit at your computer and send the email and they can correspond back if they want. But did, did you have anything else on, you gave the two quotes.
Yeah, I just have one question for, for John. I'm an election worker like you are. And so, my question to you is, how do we stop this, the two voters, the absentee voter who took more time to get an absentee ballot or to vote by absentee ballot than going to the regular, what would be your solution to trying to get a better way to handle the absentee ballots that we didn't do in November?
Um, well, actually as being part of that entire process, I was upstairs doing all the paperwork. If there is, I know, I know how Pam has to deal with this city clerk, Pam Higby.
Pam Higby, sure.
I know how, I know what she has to deal with for the election. I was there. I was behind the scenes for all of it. The way we actually set it up, where the people, they came in, went upstairs, we took care of all the paperwork and they came down and actually cast their ballots downstairs, was far superior than to having a line from the city clerk's desk all the way out the front door. And that was the whole reason we did it that way. I don't know if there is a more expedient way. I, it's, it's unbelievable.
How about more than one place where they can get an absentee ballot? We have bank outlets. You know, we had 85,000, 8,500 people vote by absentee ballot for the presidential election.
A big part of, a big part of the issue with the wait was we had a lot of people that would come in at, I'd say about 3:00 in the afternoon. And then we'd be there every day after 5:00. Just, it was, you'd get the influx at, at one time. It was really bad. And then of course, as you get closer to the election, my advice would be to vote early. But, well, no, I'm saying, because the people who wait, but then again, that's catch 22. Because if you don't, if you don't wait until the last minute, then you're not getting all of the information that you need to make an informed decision. I, I honestly, I don't know. If you have it in other places, then you have to have more, more officials. Because I know the way that, that it was stated with the ballots and I don't, and I, you'd have to ask Pam.
Sure.
Because I don't know this for certain and I don't want to speak for her.
I understand. But you were a worker. So, I thought I'd, I'd get your opinion.
Right. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. Maybe she would take more people who are chairman like myself and she would be able to have an outpost. But I don't know if she would be able to do that or not. That's something that you'd actually have to bring up with her.
All right. The other big snafu is the, the.
Just, it was, it was, you'd get the influx at, at one time that was really bad. And then of course, as you get closer to the election, my advice would be to vote early. But, well, no, I'm saying, because the people who wait, but then again, that's catch 22 because if you don't, if you don't wait until the last minute, then you're not getting all of the information that you need to make an informed decision. I, I honestly, I don't know. If you have it in other places, then you have to have more, more officials. Because I, I know the way that, that it was stated with the ballots and I don't, and I, you'd have to ask Pam.
Sure.
Because I don't know this for certain and I don't want to speak for her.
I understand, but you were a worker, so I thought I'd, I'd get your opinion.
Right, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. Maybe she would take more people who are chairman like myself and she would be able to have an outpost. But I don't know if she would be able to do that or not. That's something that you'd actually have to bring up with her.
All right, the other big snafu is the absentee ballots weren't delivered to the wards until midway or late in the afternoon of election day. And so most of the wards had hundreds of absentee ballots to process and we were there until midnight. What would you do about absentee ballots, about when they can be delivered to the, through the wards?
Here's, here's the biggest problem, or I shouldn't say problem. Here's the biggest reason why we get them late in the day. They have to wait until the mail comes, that way they get everybody's ballots that need to get to the polling place. I know that because I've gone, I do the testing for the TSX equipment, I do the instruction for the TSX. I help on, with, when the chairman come in handing out all the equipment. So like I said, I'm very involved with the whole election process. It won't be this time, by the way, if anybody is worried about that.
That was my...
But, but, yeah, it's, it's one of those things where their hands are tied too because they want to ensure that every ballot is counted. And the only way to ensure that is to wait until the mail comes on election day and then they have to sort through those, get them to each ward that they have to go to. They have everything else sorted already and then they have to get them out to us. And I'd say there was even bigger problem, which was that the places didn't go through their ballots fast enough. Because I actually found out after I had my polling place closed and I was ready to go out the door, that there were two, two ballots that were supposed to be from my polling station that went to someone else. So the county board of canvas ended up having to add them on when they went through and redid them. But everything came out good when we did the recount with Jessica, so I was happy about that.
Steve, I want to go back to, to, you know, economic development for a little bit if we can. You know, we had talked about, I think Dan had asked what we do, maybe I asked it, who knows? What we do to bring in more business and specifically some, some industrial type things. And you had said, you know, essentially make it more cost effective for businesses to do business. There are parts of the state though that are getting more businesses kind of sprouting up in their area. What would we or could we do specifically to get people, to sort of entice them to Oshkosh?
Well, I think the first, the first question is, what type of businesses are we looking for? An example, Madison is getting very high tech, very, they're trying to attract that. What type of businesses do we want here? And I, I think once we answer that question, then we put a program together to start soliciting those type of business. What size businesses? Is it realistic to a company to move, you know, a thousand people here? Well, probably not. So what is good with our educational system as far as then what would be compatible type of businesses to bring in?
Is there something specifically you'd like to see?
No. Yeah, I think we, this, the valley has a history of, you know, with the textbooks, printing for example, because the paper companies, well, they're, they're changing. But with the, you know, the, the technical colleges have developed curriculum to complement the paper companies. You know, what can we do working with the technical colleges to develop programs that would attract the businesses we're trying to, trying to find? You know, aviation is becoming fairly popular. Can we build on that? Should we build on that? Should we build more on just tourism? And we've got all this water. Riverfronts are trying to develop. The pioneer, you know, is that a category that we could start to really promote?
Sure.
Bring in?
And maybe some, some additional tax credits to help promote some of that. I mean, you know, you've got tech zone credits that are helping some of this technology to, to, you know, proliferate if you will. And, you know, maybe we need to look at the state giving more tax credits.
We just have to make it attractive to do business here.
Okay. And John, you had mentioned a couple of times about, you know, aldermanic form of government. You know, certainly that's been an ongoing discussion in this city for years and years and years. You know, is that, I'm getting the sense that that's something that you would like to see in Oshkosh? You know, you just think that that's a more effective form of government?
Somewhere down the road, yes. At the, at the least, and I think that the city would really benefit if our council members had just seat numbers. They don't have to represent a district, just seat numbers. You have seat one through six and a mayor. And now if I wanted to run in this election, if I wanted to challenge Tony Palmieri, I can challenge Tony Palmieri. If I want to run for the vacant seat, I run for the vacancy. If I want to challenge Jessica King, I run against her. I think that allows us to choose the best person for the job in more cases because you have direct competition. Whereas when you have the at-large bid, I think a lot of people tune things out, like I was saying, the apathy. You know, ah, there are too many people right now, it doesn't matter. That's why you get, if we're lucky, 10% turnout in, in February. It's, and I don't, I, I know there are a lot of people in this city, a lot of people that are my parents' age and above, that are dead set. They, they're like, I remember how bad Mayor Alderman was. And I, and I feel for them and that's why I say, maybe down the road, that's, that's something we could go into. Maybe somewhere down the road, we could go into where there are three districts in the city of Oshkosh. You have three full-time counselors and the other three are at large. It's a compromise between the two. You know, there are all different ideas on that and I'm not saying, and I would never say that, that's something we need to get to now. But I think down the road, representative government is never a bad thing. That's why we have the House of Representatives. That's why we have a county board and they're, they have their districts. It's, it's not necessarily a bad thing, but like I said, it's not something we need to do tomorrow, next week, next year.
Of course, with everything continuing to go up, at any point down the road, when we start looking at the potential for full-time council members, we're looking at increased costs. Do you fiscally see that as ever being possible?
I do see it as possible because I, I think the way you do it is, is you don't, if you, if they're full-time, they're full-time, but you don't give them a salary that makes it so they want to keep that office for life. So in current, current day terms, say fifteen, twenty thousand dollars for, for a full-time. That way if somebody is married and they're running for council, their spouse also works, they can still afford to be a council member, but they're not going to be a council member for life. They're going to go back. And it's kind of, I guess you would say almost imposing a term, term limit without actually having a term limit. Because someone's not going to sit there and want to make fifteen dollars a year for the rest of their life, living off of this city's pay.
Or you may find someone who's retired who, who likes that extra money.
But then they still have to get elected. That's the thing.
They just might.
Well, they might, but if they're getting elected, then the people are happy with the job that they're doing, you would think. Can't, so it's one of those, now that, that's just, like I said, that's just another idea. Maybe there are areas in our current system right now that we can slim, you know, cut back on, which we were talking, we both talked about earlier, which was slimming down the government. If you slim down the government, maybe there's some job positions, and I don't want to point fingers in anyone's direction, I don't want anybody to think that I'm doing that. Just saying, if you look at the numbers, maybe possibly. Say all of a sudden you find something, someone who's got a couple of mid fifty thousand dollar a year jobs that maybe aren't needed in the city of Oshkosh. And that, like I said, that's not pointing a finger at anyone. Well, then you've got a hundred, if you get a hundred and five thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars divided into, into that is seven, seven council members. So that would be a way of making, you would have these other, because then you're having people that are, your council, instead of having these other people, you're having the council being directly responsible. Then they're on, then because of them being on the payroll for more, it's more of a, a job that they have to take seriously. People can contact them, there's a way to contact them all the time, not necessarily just during the day. They could still keep a part-time job maybe on the side, but they're going to want to spend more time working at the council because more is going to be expected of you if you're getting paid more.
Are, are you saying then that the council members that we have right now aren't necessarily taking the job that seriously?
I don't want to say that, but they have lives. They're beginning, and the facts are, this is a city of sixty-five thousand people plus. And we've got approximately, what, mid twenty thousand dollars worth of salary paying for the people who make the decisions for our city. If you think about that, if you're running a business with as, as many millions involved as the city of Oshkosh has, would you hire somebody for twenty-five thousand dollars to run your business?
But it does work in other cities.
Myself.
This is a city manager form of government. I mean, we are being paid, the city manager and the assistant city manager between them is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salaries.
Exactly. But do we have an assistant city manager under the, the previous city manager?
Under our current one?
No, under, under the, under the previous one, Mr. Rolloff was there.
No, no.
We had a, well, Warren Craft would take over if there was a, you know, that was kind of...
And again, that's not trying to cast any, because I, I don't, I don't know, haven't talked with Mr. Rolloff that, that much or, or the assistant. So I don't want to make it, but it's, it's a valid question because we did not have one for so long. And really, what's changed with, under the new city management?
Well, I think...
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think one thing, our current city manager is a trained professional. There, there's a, a progression as a city manager. You start with a small town and you, it's like, it's like a corporate, you, you work your way up. And I think that's the huge benefit of our current city manager. He is a trained, experienced professional. I think you take that background and then the, the planning process where the, there is a 10-year plan. You know, we used to call them business plans or marketing plans. There is that 10-year plan. It charts things out. That would avoid, eliminate the, a city council making, getting wrapped up in nitpicky things. I mean, you don't have to micromanage the whole thing. Here is the plan, here's where we're going, here's the direction. We've hired people, a city manager, we have other people within the city government. Your job is to execute this plan that's been approved by the city council on behalf of the residents. I mean, it's, it shouldn't be horribly complicated. You, you work the plan and it, it's a well-thought-out plan and you, but it's, it's flexible. It's like, it's a breathing document. As, as the economy does what it's doing, but there, there are systems in place to ride these economic storms that we're going through. There's got to be a long-term plan. That's kind of my point, that get the plan going, approve it, and you don't have to micromanage from a common council standpoint every, every two weeks.
Well, but, see what I don't understand, I guess, is with, with Mr. Rolloff and, and I know he, I've met him briefly. I haven't had a chance to actually, like I said, sit and talk with him yet. Seems like a very nice, very nice, very intelligent person. But then when you see things like this dog issue that come before the city council, how did it get past the city manager to the city council with the pit bulls?
I don't think it...
It hasn't, it hasn't gone to the common council.
It's not going to now, it's a dead issue.
It came out of the health department.
But it's, but you have these, you have these things, but isn't that part, also part of what the city manager's there for? So he, because he's supposed to give, isn't he the one who throws the ideas to the city council? You know, in most, in a good share of cases?
You have these group of advisory committees and they, they have their own, and this came out of, of one of the city committees. You know, I don't think the city manager, you know, went down and said, you know, you can't do this or I want you to do this. It came out of, out of the health department person doing his business.
What I'm seeing is he's relaying, he's bringing the message over and saying, well, this needs action, is what I'm saying. This, because it's coming to us, I, I believe that I...
Well, the health department would bring the, the, the ordinance to the common council.
Okay, then the, the shoveling, where's that one coming from?
I think it came from, from the...
Department of Public Works, I think.
Department of Public Works, the Apotexes, yeah.
Right, so, but what I'm saying is, I, you, so you're, you think that the city manager has absolutely no knowledge of these before they come to the council?
Oh, no, I'm saying he's, he's not an autocrat where he determines everything from every one of his departments.
No, he doesn't, no, I'm not saying that, but he can, if, if he feels something's worth being taken under consideration, I'm guessing that he would have the authority to say, you know, hey, maybe this would go nowhere. To hit, to the people, to the department heads themselves.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, yeah. I, I think that he probably would, but I think he probably feels that there's some merit.
I'm not saying he's responsible for these things being brought up in the first place. There are other people, other issues and there are everyday people that are out there that bring up the issues, which is how they come to the department heads.
I think he probably feels that there's merit in, you know, in the dog issue, which is now somewhat dead.
Very dead.
Well, there will be other parts of that, but just not the dog-specific legislation.
I think there are a lot of situations that get very blown out of proportion too.
I, I agree with that.
And the pit, pit bull, pit bull thing is, well, I mean, where do you stop? Do you take, okay, there's, what's the next cranky-buried dog out there?
Exactly.
You just can't do stuff like that. It's the owners that are responsible. And there, there are laws, ordinances in place for this city that to come out and all of a sudden, oh, we're going to create something new over a breed of dog that granted is, doesn't have the world's best reputation. But there are other dogs too that are, can be kind of nasty. So where, where do we draw the line?
Right. Well, I, I agree completely, you know, enforce things against the owner and, and not necessarily the, the breed itself.
We don't need to keep creating new ordinances, new laws, when there are things on the books already.
That they can't enforce.
That they can't, that they can't, we're just creating paperwork and wasting time.
It doesn't make you a successful counselor, legislator, whatever, by proposing more legislation all the time or more ordinance, having more ordinances passed. You try to make things work better with what you have. You can, you can frame the ordinance, you can reshape the ordinances if they, they have an issue with the way they're worded. Or the way, maybe the way it was passed in, in the first place doesn't fit to current times, so you would craft it around today. That's, I think that's a big part of what, what we're both on with this one, is that you don't need to necessarily create all the laws. Let's make the laws that are there work.
Some of the complaints that people within the city, whether it's the city council or maybe the city manager, have, have heard time and time again, have to do with our, our community development department and our inspections department. You know, I realize that you guys are kind of on the outside looking in because you've not served on the council at all, but, you know, I, I'm sure that you hear things from, from people that you talk with or maybe you come across within your line of work, Steve. You know, are, are you happy with what we have currently in the inspections department and the way it works? And in our community development department and the way it's working? And, you know, if so, why? And if not, how would you change it?
Well, I think, this may be rather cliche, but we have to be much more customer-friendly and realistic. Personal experience I had, some years ago, I was installing a fence in my backyard. I was pulling teeth. I mean, here are the plans, here are all the drawings, here's the photo from a very, it's, you know, a very expensive fence matching the architecture of my home. And it was, you know, here's my ten dollars. It was an interrogation. And I think that has to end. I mean, there's, there's got to be logic. We've got to be customer-friendly. The taxpayers are the customer. The people in this building work for the taxpayers. They can't put these people through hoops for things.
We've heard that before.
Very much so. And I think unfortunately, there are some people, not most, but I do think that there's some people within city hall who forget who's paying their salary.
And just customer-friendly, the reality. There's going to be a lot of logic and things. I think we've lost a lot of logic in many things.
What about community development, Steve? Are you happy with what you see coming out of that department?
Not totally.
How, do you have some sense of how you might change it?
I guess less nitpicking, less, more reality. I guess I'm kind of repeating myself, but there has to be reality in anything. I came from a manufacturing background, which at one time was very driven by engineering. Manufacturing couldn't produce half the engineering drawings, which caused huge problems. We shifted to a, a system where we would have realistic specifications that were then rigidly enforced. Which completely churned, changed the whole culture of a company. I think that some of this, the same thing applies to a city.
John?
Well, going back, going back to what he was saying about the common sense with trying to put a fence in, in the yard. You buy a house, you own the property and you want to improve your property. And you're not doing it so it's going to devalue anyone around you. You're not doing it so it's going to make your house an eyesore. How, it, it should, it should be a no-brainer. You walk in and say, I, I want to put a patio in my backyard. You know, all I want to do is put, put a slab of concrete in, I'm going to put an awning over the top of it. Okay, fine, here you go, here's your permit, instead of having to jump through hoops. And it, there's, there's just a lot of common sense that should be had. It should be easy to come down and get a permit to build on your house or if you want to redo your kitchen or if you want to redo your front porch or anything like that. I mean, you're improving your house, you're improving what is eventually, you're going to have to pay your property taxes on. So you're actually in the long run going to make more money for the city by improving your house.
So I bet you probably went nuts last year with that house on the east side. It was in the near east neighborhood or was it close to the, in the near east neighborhood?
The windows in and then they had to be taken out and...
Yep.
You know, and, and I, and I don't know what the best way to go about, are you talking about the historic, the one that was on the historic register?
Was it on the historic register? I didn't think that it was, but...
Because I, I remember there was a house that was on, or was that the, that was Avicap with the...
I'm talking about the Avicap one, yeah.
Because I think, wasn't that, isn't that on a, on a historic register, I believe?
I don't think so.
Or is, maybe it was a different one that I'm thinking of then. But exactly, if someone's, if someone's trying to improve their property and it's going to push the value of their home up, that's, that's nothing but good for the neighborhood. It makes the houses next to it improve if, unless... It makes the houses next to it improve, if, unless, of course, they just let them go to pot. But I don't understand, you don't have somebody who comes in and buys a TV. And then they go home with their TV, and now, now, say, you had to have, get a permit to get anything for your TV. So, now I have to come down and get a permit to get my surround sound system, or to get my DVD player, to get my Blu-ray. And then they want to make me jump through hoops, because I'm trying to improve my home viewing habits. It's kind of the same thing.
Well, I'll speak to the Near East program. And I think that, in concept, it's great. It's great for the whole city, not just that part of town. There's some, you know, great houses in this town, modest homes, or built as modest homes, that are nice. I mean, they've gone through some unfriendly remodeling over the years. It wouldn't take a lot to get them close to where they were architecturally without huge expense. And personally, I live in a house that was built in the 1850s. And it's, we've kept it historically correct. It's eligible for the, but we haven't done the paperwork. It's expensive. We've made the decision, all right, we will, we know it's going to be expensive, and we understand that. Wooden steps, which we've kept, the wooden railings. And we've been there 35 years. Every 10 years, they have to be replaced. I mean, it's costly, but we've chosen to do that. To force people, that's not right. It's my home. Don't dictate how I should have steps to my house, or that type of stuff, because it is costly. In other words, those national architectural standards they try to impose on that neighborhood is too much. They're not realistic. I mean, there are, the programs, depending if you get funding from the federal government or the state, that's one category. And then you do, but you've chosen to jump through those hoops for that money. And you're passionate about your home. And we're passionate about our home, I'm not going to jump through hoops. But then there's the other part, where you're forcing people to adhere to a standard that you think is right, when in fact, is it right for those people? It's their home. It is their home, period. And again, they can't be allowed to let it turn into an eyesore and dangerous, but it's their home.
Sure.
Well, just in a simple case scenario, someone who's, you know, a young family in their early 20s getting their first home. They have enough money to buy a home in this neighborhood, because they want to do their own work. But to them, they just want a nice home. They don't necessarily want a, you know, a home that looks like a house that was there before any of their, maybe relatives even lived in the area. Maybe they just want to have a nice home to come home to. Who are we to say no for them to build a nice home, to raise a family in?
And there are some, you know, there are some great neighborhoods in the whole city, not just the Near East side, the south side, that are just, there's a lot of great architecture. And I think, but allow the people to do with their homes as they want.
And something is better than nothing, you know? I mean, because if people can't afford the changes that the city wants to impose, they're not going to have the money to do those changes, and it will just sit looking worse.
And they can't afford to switch to another house.
Right, right.
If the city wants to enforce their idea of what those changes of the house should look like, then they should pay for them. Don't ask the homeowner to do that.
A study done in the fall of 2007 and released in June of '08 showed that respondents rated the airport and the industrial park areas as poor. It gave healthcare institutions a rating slightly above average. It said tourism institutions like the convention center needed significant improvements. Said both the convention bureau and the Oshkosh chamber failed in their customer service missions. And it indicated that the downtown was stagnant, it seemed empty, and was kind of dreary. Now, obviously, the convention center is being upgraded, and downtown has improved somewhat, although there's still a lot of empty storefronts. What would you gentlemen suggest doing to improve some of those other aspects?
Well, I can go first, I guess. Downtown, again, I've lived here all my life, so I've seen downtown go from downtown to no-town, no-town. And I think the reality is downtown USA is gone. And to try to recreate it, reinvent it, bring it back, isn't going to work. Downtown now is what we have, every town has. Highway 41, downtowns are just that. Strip malls, box stores, that type of thing. There are a few cities who've done a nice job with their downtowns, giving them an identity. You know, Nina's done a nice job, Lakeland, Florida's done a great job, but they're a year wrong. They can do things that we can't do. Galena, Illinois, has done a nice job, but it's very touristy.
Well, Appleton's done a nice job, Nina, even Fond du Lac has done a nice-
Fond du Lac's done a nice job. You know, Sturgeon Bay has done a nice job, but, you know, they've stopped people from going through Sturgeon Bay, at least stop and do some shopping. So, I think before you keep trying to recreate downtown, because it isn't going to be downtown anymore, what is it, what is it that we want downtown to be? Is it artsy, is it a Galena-type of, you know, we're not going to get a department store down there. It's not going to, it's not going to be what it was. We're not going to have movie theaters and, so, you know, stop. I think we have to stop trying to turn it back to what it was 50, 100 years ago.
John?
Well, seeing as you talked about downtown, I'm going to go to something I know a little bit about, because I used to work at the airport when United Express was here in town. And we actually still were having, we didn't have the subsidized seats yet. It was, we were still doing a good job of getting people in and out of town. We didn't have to bus people out. And then I moved out to Las Vegas and worked for big United Airlines out there. Came back a year later to work for United Express, and then we're only getting the 19-seat planes in here, and when half the people were sending up to Appleton, because our flights aren't coming in. I think we're missing a big opportunity with this Allegion Air that just, that just moved out of Green Bay. I know, because that's the polling place that I happen to chair. I asked, I asked the airport director, I said, "Did we put in, did we put in a bid on this?" He said, "Well, we contacted them, let them know we were interested, but we don't have the proper equipment here. So, we need security equipment. We would have to update security equipment, we would have to get some kind of a Jetway setup or something like that." But I think, I think, you look at cities around, our size around the country, they all have airports of some sort.
Okay. We're almost out of time. Why don't you each take a look into camera three there and take about 30 seconds to tell folks why they should vote for you on Tuesday, February 17th? John, go ahead.
Alfred Einstein once said that to do the same thing over and over again and expect different results is the definition of insanity. As you've heard from both of us tonight, we both think that the city is kind of stuck in that route, where they're doing the same things over and over and expecting the different results. We need some people who are going to provide some fresh ideas, some new ideas, and maybe think a little bit outside the box that the city's been thinking in so far. Hopefully, with one voice, we'll be able to get the rest of the people on board with that. And maybe, just maybe, we can make people excited about their government again.
Okay, Steve?
I think one of the things that makes me very qualified, which I said before, I have lived here all of my life. I'm very committed to Oshkosh. I have owned a business in Oshkosh. I think one of the main advantages I have is a very strong marketing background, a business background. And I believe that's how a city has to be operated to some degree. It is, it is a business. We have to be customer-friendly, we have to move quickly, we have to be progressive, we have to have vision.
All right, very good. Thank you both for being here.
Good luck to both of you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks to the crew and Dan and all of you folks at home. Remember to go to the polls on Tuesday, February 17th. We'll see you next time. Until then, take good care, keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Oshkosh.